Okay, I could call this meeting of planning board full spring to order. We've got a few items today to cover. But before we jump into that, I'd like to add a, I'd like to request that the board add an agenda item to today's agenda, which is just reading the conclusion to the zoning board hearing that was adopted with respect to one thirty-three, one thirty-five main, just as kind of closing the loop.
Can I get a? You may, I'll get a second, okay.
Great.
A favor?
Hi.
Okay, so we'll do that. Before we do that, let's do the March twenty-eighth minute. I think those are deep in the bag. Yeah. Fourteenth, twenty eighth. So we can't do the fourteenth because
Actually, we can.
Oh, we can.
That was my error. Hillary was here.
Okay, great. Okay, well, now let's start with the, we'll start with the fourteenth and, and everyone just do a, a quick read and make sure it represents their memory.
Karen, I have one L in my name.
Yes, I made that mistake on an email thread earlier this week, so apologies.
That's why I don't need.
That's my picture. So this must be another Hillary, because it's clearly not me. I do the same thing when people add an I into my name.
If I put two? Well, I see, I see at least down here.
Oh, oh, in the foot. Oh, that's in the footnote. Okay, fair enough. Okay, so that has to be changed. Change that.
Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve. It's like fourteen minutes.
I'll pick it down.
We need everyone to say.
Yeah.
All right.
And then we go on to.
Yeah, we're going to the twenty-eighth now. Yeah.
I move to approve the minutes of March twenty-eight.
A second. Thanks. Hi, Karen.
Just want to listen to my music. I will sing some. Thank you, Mr.
All right. So with the, let's do the correspondence DVA related, then we can move on to the DVA perspective, one thirty-three, one thirty-five main and, and then the, the old business as well. So we have a referral from forty-one, from the DVA for forty-one Morris Ave. It's a residential lot. Strangely enough, I put an offer in on when I was considering moving to the village. But it is now going before the zoning board to receive an area variance so they can build a porch into the restricted side yard. And they also have a, a larger porch on the other side as well. So I've reviewed this. I don't personally see anything that is necessarily meriting of, of the planning board's comments, but if anyone else sees something, we can talk about it.
Give me just one second to find everything. Is that spell we were? Is it among this, these things?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the, it's this package right here. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Yeah.
Well, this is forty-one Morris?
Yes.
Okay, we're not talking about forty main.
No, 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 sorry. Forty-one Morris.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So yeah, if you
for the very
he's a Yeah. So yeah, you can see here basically the, the additions are this side, side side porch, side porch and two sides, basically two giant side porches.
They already have one though, right?
They have a front, there's a front porch on there and then they're adding a, a large open sort of fortune to what is a, this is a plant area and a garden area. But there's no, there's no restriction. Yeah, there's no restriction on that side and I think that the percentage, where they're not even anywhere close to the percentage. So, so they're, they're going from fifteen to twenty-two.
What? So one percent five various required and?
Yeah.
Twenty point two seventy-four, twenty-five.
Yes. And that's, and, and just to point out that it's, it's a corner lot. So, so Morris is, is parallel with the, with the front porch from Velvet Ear is West Velvet Ear is, is parallel with that, the proposed side, side porch. So it has I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly the, there's provisions for corner lots in terms of how the, how the setbacks work, work there in the code. I think it's twenty, it ends up pushing it to twenty-five on two sides and then instead of the, what would normally be a twenty, I think, is that right?
Could be, I don't know.
Yeah.
Twenty-five is fine again. No, this looks fine. I mean, I have any questions. I'm good.
And this is different from which over here, right? Or is this the same thing?
No, different. That's, that, that is, that, that is that's not, yes, that is a subdivision and, and we're not addressing it tonight yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
No comments for me.
Okay. Then I will
do a short
do a short man random to Yeah. Do you want, if we need to approve me, make a motion and approve it for me to do that, to do a, a no, no comment or pass and I can do?
Probably a motion would be good.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for myself to send the DVA a no comment on on forty-one Morris. Yeah.
I approve I.
Good. All right, knocking them down. Next order of so here's the, this is the, a draft of the adopted resolution from the DVA with respect to the one thirty-five, one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main Street. There were I think three variances sought and two were, two were approved.
I think there's only two variances sought and two approved, lot area coverage and the parking issue.
But I think the parking had, there were two variances that were at, at
Yeah, the number of cars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no, sorry. I mean, that, that there was, there was a variance that was on, at least on the agenda that was for considering allowing parking in the, in the, in the driveway itself.
Right, right. And it's kind of a semantics thing.
Yeah.
Because it's a dead end driveway, you know, like where you're driving to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Term of this, of it. A parking space.
Yeah.
So it's really just a request. Well, and, and then we reconfigured the, the layout so that we spaced two in that.
Yeah.
So, and I've got a amended plan, which I think was circulated to you.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're the, the definition of two spaces.
Right, right. So the, the, the DVA approved the variances, the one related to what we're most interested in to make what was previously a non-conforming plan, which we're not allowed to approve. With none in our, none in our jurisdiction or none of our, none of our powers aboard to approve non-conforming plans makes it conforming now. And the kind of color from Eric and ZBA was primarily just, they were very, I think that, that they were very interested in the kind of the holistic, kind of looking, looking at the project from a holistic perspective and both the, the positive impacts of the project, the economic usability of it, the fact that it occupies a kind of a border area between two kinds of zones, a residential and, and a business zone. And and that's you know, that's in, in a, in a, in a way that we kind of noted in our comments that there is a, there, there is a directive in the, in the code to enable and support walking lifestyles and to reduce traffic in the village. And that there was some feeling that by, by basically by affording the variance and only requiring two, that this was like a, a balancing act between kind of all of those things. So and as, as always, they were very, you know, very thoughtful group and, and kind of did a, did a great job considering all that. So I think that, that kind of, that tees up the, the, the business of the day. Any, any questions or comments about what we heard from the DVA?
No, I mean, this, this, this memo was very helpful though.
Yeah.
Really goes through and
Yeah.
speaks to exactly what the issue was and how they, how they determined the outcome.
Yeah, great. Let's move on to the main event.
Do you have to vote on anything with this?
No, I don't think so. It's just kind of informational. Yeah. So James, would you like to walk us through the, the updates? And then we can talk about what's next.
Right, thanks. So the, the upshot, well, to back up a little bit in my meetings that we worked on, meeting the, the board, there was a concern about providing ADA access to the commercial spaces on the first floor as well as providing trash enclosures, the screening of close port planting and six foot high fences at the neighboring essential lots. And, and so that's what we've included on the site plan. So what's changed since that original submission? We've included an enclosure here for the trash and recycling. Thankfully, it gives us enough space to clear for ADA compliant ramp to the rear porch that is shared between the two commercial spaces so that access can be allowed there. It's, it's, there's really no way to, to work it at the street front side. We have changed the parking to show the two spaces there as well as the plantings and the, the six foot fence at the, these two residential units here. We had to flip the, the steps on the stairs to the rear apartments to the other side. We were showing them here initially. But you know, so that the, the driveway can work. Otherwise, it's really, it's really no material change otherwise. And that's essentially where we are. The front yard area, I don't know that the purchase was formally signed, but it was approved by the village board. I, I, I don't know if the, the client has received the offer letter and has, has, you know, completed the purchase, but that has been worse.
Is that, will that block the hearing happening?
The purchase of the parcel? I don't think so. No, I think you can at least open it. You know, an issue comes up, you can always hold the public hearing open.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, thanks for, thanks for these details. I'm, I'm curious when, in moving the, the stairs for, for the residents to get up. Do you have plans for like, is this, is this going to be yard, like pure yard, like grass down here? Is it going to be like a, like walkway that, that is?
Yeah.
That's going to be, you know, I guess, safe for them to, to walk in rainy weather and stuff like that?
Great point. We just, we did show it as, as lawn, but yes, we can certainly send a pathway over to it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would, that would, I would want that if I were there. Just, just imagine myself tumbling in in the rain with groceries and flipping and hurting myself. Do folks have other questions about this?
No, I mean, I think that's a great solution to fit someone inside and both of them have direct access in and out. So no one has to turn around. I know you were talking about maybe having a way for these carts back in and back out and it didn't seem like it was going to work. Yeah. Good.
It's reducing compromise.
Yeah. Yeah.
I saw there's a lighting plan too. I know that was one thing you would ask for.
Yeah. That was the, in the back, right?
Yeah. And you said the track now that
It's there next to the ADA ramp and Well, this is the lighting, right?
No.
No. Oh, no, that's the ceiling.
That's the ceiling plan. I am talking on that one. I actually we had reflected to have another site lighting plan. And so um, that was something that I would be glad to include in there. I don't think that we
So then we can talk through what our priorities are for the, for the lighting. I don't, it seems like a important but small enough issue that we could move forward to the, to the hearing. So I think things that I would, I would want to think about, like there's, there's, basically when it comes to lighting, I think of two big categories of things. One is safety and one is how annoying is this to neighbors?
Right.
You know, and so I think that like, those are going to be my, my priorities in evaluating that. I know other folks have other dimensions of lighting that they
I totally agree.
I guess the, the other actually, I'll, I'll put a third thing in there, which is impact, like environmental impact is in terms of like, you know, we don't live near the, we don't live, live near the Jersey shores. We have to worry about the sea turtles, but but there are nocturnal creatures that are, they kind of get all sorts of out of whack for weird lighting situations. So that's something to think about.
Yeah, so we always work to provide dark sky compliant lighting. So we aren't, are, first of all, creating glare and so for cut, cutoff lighting. We, you know, for example, we've designed the lighting for the cold spring dock. So and in that epic, I actually was doing research on, you know, if there's, if there are lighting frequencies that are less impactful on insects, because for one thing, I wanted to not have a cloud of insects as people are, you know, we bring lighting down here and they sit next to them.
Right.
And, and as well as, you know, aquatic life in the river.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, there isn't a lot out there. There is a little bit on sea turtles, but not, not much for porch lighting and things like that.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, you know, as far as animal kind of impacts, I don't have a lot to do for that.
Yeah.
Reducing glare
Yeah.
and not over lighting.
Yeah.
Also serves
Serves both. Yeah, 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 yeah. I think, yeah, the over lighting part is, I think, is a big part of it is, you know.
You know, and something that can be really annoying is lights that are always left on or that, you know, a leaf blows and the, you know, floodlights go on. So
Yeah.
I, I'm a really big fan of, of very low, you know, pathway lighting for, you know, so, you know, like at the, at this entire walkway, you know, putting pathway lighting along here so that, you know, low kind of fixtures that only put light on the walk, walkway.
Yeah.
And kind of give you that orientation. I mean, it, it makes sense to put it all the way around essentially.
Yep.
And so that, you know, we're really only lighting the path and not creating any glare situation and really just lighting what's needed. The same approach would essentially be on the porch, but you know, for the steps. And, you know, then just probably, you know, we have to address what the historic review board would want for lighting, but you know, usually that's less of a problem since it's
Right, but the, the housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we have an example of reduced glare lighting on our own office. So you know, they're, they're fully shielded so that it's not thrown light beyond. Okay, that's, that's would be what we provided for that. And I can buy cut sheets for any solutions.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, of course, there's still the historic review board that would review that.
Yep.
But they would also be quick and sort of out.
Yeah. Yeah. For the folks?
Okay. All right, it seems like the applicant has addressed pretty much all of the board's questions. So if you're ready, you can vote to schedule a public hearing.
All right, someone like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
A second? A favor, hi.
Hi.
And maybe before you vote, Karen, what would be the next date?
I think the next available date would be to give us enough time to publish would be May twenty-third.
Okay, so it's a
Okay.
May twenty-third is the public, this meeting will be public. Is that what it is or, or is it a?
Yeah, we'll be up there. The, I mean, the meeting's already public.
No, I mean for public.
We, yeah, we will have public comments. You know, people who have a vested interest, hopefully will come and say what they like or what they don't like and we'll hear what they have to say and we'll figure out what, what, what we need to do forward.
And so that's the second.
I'm curious, this is unrelated to, to this particular scheduling. I, I know that the, the zoning board has had similar trouble with the timing because of the, the, the kind of the if you, if you had things timed perfectly, you could do it in two weeks.
Right.
Right? Which seems like a big advantage to anyone who's, you know, been very patient with us in the process. What are, is there something we could do to make that more possible?
I think Karen, do you know how many days of the mailings have to go out and?
Well, the mailings have to be ten days before the hearing. So that's, and I guess it would be the same addresses that you used for the zoning board. The publishing is a little more tricky because you have to, we published twice in the PCNR. So you have to get it in the Friday before you want the first date to be published. So and then you have to look at what this actual schedule of this board is. So I think it would be almost impossible to do it for the ninth
Sure, sure.
So the, the next best thing is to go two weeks out. And this way you have a little time. There's anything that, you know, needs to be amended or changed.
Understood. Yeah. Yeah. Trying to balance, you know, expediency and, and practicality. So it sounds like we're, we're, the, the standard will be a month, basically. Okay.
Have you heard anything from the, the neighbors?
Nothing.
Jonathan, how, I know with the, the prior planning board, I used to do the notice of public hearing, then I would send it to you guys for approval. So do you want to?
How does the board feel about that?
I just want to make sure that I'm getting the right zone references in the, you know, the zone reference. So I can do that if the board wants me to.
Sorry, Karen should have one.
I was confirming that I was available. So sorry about that.
The prior board, I used to do the notices of public hearing.
Yeah.
For them, you know, every board is different. The zoning board, Eric does it himself. HDRB Sean usually does it. I did it for the planning board. So if you want me to continue to do that and then send it to Jonathan just to
But this time, that would be great. And, and, but send it to me and Jonathan, just so that I can start to, you know, there, it may, it may be a thing that, that we want to, to start doing ourselves and not, not, not burden you with, but maybe not, maybe, maybe like, I, I think it's
No, any burden you take.
Yeah. Yeah. So so yeah, just, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. But this, this seems like a great plan for, for this one.
And I will clarify.
Yeah.
Sorry, you would ask if any, anyone had contacted us. Actually, the owner of this property, who was my former landlord, because I entered there at number two Thumble Avenue. So Brian, he's out of town and he got noticed that he had the ZBA notification. And so he asked me what was up. I emailed him the drawings.
Yeah.
And I didn't write anything back since then. But so other than that, what's up?
Well, we'll have an opportunity.
So Jonathan, the other question I had, since there's many boards involved in this, and the zoning board has already done their hearing and they, I think it's in the resolution too, that they've declared it a type two under secret. Does, does the planning board ha- have to state that they're the lead agency or how, how do you do that?
No, so if it's a type two, there's no coordinator review, no lead agency. It's just a type two, no secret review required.
Okay.
So before the, the planning board ultimately votes, they'll just note that it's a type two.
They would do the same thing. And so, and the, the part one EAF that Mr. Beech had filled out, the, the, the board doesn't have to do now a part two review of that.
Yeah, and if it's a type two, you really don't even need to do the, the part one. It's good for applicants to submit it just in case, but you don't really need it.
Okay.
All right, I think that is that item. There are no more items.
I think I interrupted you guys actually before you voted to actually schedule
Oh, we did. Over the twenty, yeah, sorry. I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-four.
Hi.
All right. Great. I'll see you on the twenty-third.
Yeah. Thank you, twenty-third. Thank you. Oh. Um, unless there's, and the else, can I get someone?
You have no new business, public comment.
Yeah.
Some home improvement.
Yeah. We'd like to make a motion to
I think it's six, six, that next
That, Karen gave us that just for reference for our next time.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll cover it next time.
So we have
Yeah.
homework.
Yeah, we have homework. Yeah. It's an interesting one. So It's an interesting one, so. Yeah. The, the, the relevant sections of the code are one, one eleven and chapter one eleven and. The scenic view should overlay. Because it technically is triggered by, by, by any subdivision.
Okay.
So. Things to consider. Shall we?
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
I guess I'll.
You'll move, move?
I'll move.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a quick one for you to come down for.
It was, yeah.
It's gonna be a lot longer.
Yeah.